The meeting will please come to order. Hello, everyone. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, May the 4th. We would like to thank you for joining us, those who are in council chambers, and those who are with us virtually. As you can see, today is Youth and Government Day, so we are really excited and appreciative of all the children and the teachers, and everyone who made this happen, for the children to be able to just experience a day in the life of their local public servants and elected officials. We will have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. At this time, we all recite the pledge allegiance.
United States of America, to which is named our nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Clerk, please call for the roll. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Darby. Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Harley.
Present. Excuse me, Mr. President, for the official roll call, we want to make sure that the council member is actually present, just to verify if Councilwoman Harley is on.
Councilmember Harley?
Present.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Field. Councilmember Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Spodola.
Present.
Councilmember Bracy.
Here.
Present Congo.
Here.
Here. Kind of sounded like.
Sounds just like you. Give him a mic.
Twelve, twelve present, one absent.
The clerk will call the roll. Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
April 12th, April 20th, 2023. City Council, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:35 PM with President Pro Tempore Miranda D. Cabrera opening up the virtual meeting. The floor was given to President Congo, who was presided over meeting virtually. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk.
At this time, I move that the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's from probably moving second that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time we'll have our committee reports.
No committee reports this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. This time we'll have our City Treasurer's report.
As of May 4th, 2023. Total investments, four hundred ninety-four million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, fifty thousand, one hundred five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total cash on hand, twelve million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, seventy thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars.
Time I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
We just have to read the complete treasurer's report, thank you.
Three hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Grand total, five hundred six million, four hundred twelve thousand, twenty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and six cents.
At this time, I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's from probably moving second that the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
For the record, Mr. President, Dewayne submitted by Dewayne Sims, City Treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carried.
At this time, Mr. President, I move that we accept all non-legislative business.
Second.
It's from probably moving second to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Going to ask Councilmember Al Mills to come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Jamil Weddington. At large, councilperson A.
Yes, good evening, Councilman Mills. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the students, parents, teachers, and especially to all my council colleagues for an amazing day. I told the families earlier that this, I've been on council for officially a year, and this has been my favorite day of the entire 365 years. So, the sponsors for this resolution for Youth and Government Day is the entire body of City Council. Stand by. He said he does not want to read anything, but he's going to stand by. So, the entire body of City Council is the sponsors. Where it is the sense of the legislation body to recognize dedicated efforts of those individuals within the City of Wilmington who instill human values of community, caring, and serving in our youth. Whereas, in the City Department of Parks and Recreation, through its Youth and Government Day, work tirelessly to prepare our youth as leaders for tomorrow by providing hands-on experience and daily operations of city government. The students, student candidates hold elections and present their platforms to their peers. The schools that are represented are the Byard School, Bancroft School, William Lewis Elementary School, Nativity Prep School, the Gateway Charter School of Delaware, and Alexisai Dupont Middle School. Whereas, the distinguished students, elected officials for the City Department heads are as follows. And when I call your name, if you could please stand? City Council President, Jaden Davis. Okay, teamwork. Thanks, Danny.
WITN, can you come give us assistance, please? Thank you. If you can just give us a few minutes, we're going to have some technical support. Come help us. Thank you. But I do want to say while we're waiting for WITN, I know that the children are extremely special to Councilmember Mills, just because I know him, and secondly, because he took his mask off. And it's all.
Yeah, yeah.
This man has been here for a year and has never taken his mask off.
Right.
Taking his mask off to say anything, so. That's how you know you guys are really special to him. All right, thank you.
So, we'll go back to, we did one, I think you got one. Do Ethan again. Councilman First District?
Ethan Clark.
Councilman Second District?
Najee Williams.
Councilman Third District?
Chase Robinson.
Councilman Fourth District?
Jaden Bethea.
Councilman Fifth District?
Jeffrey Flores.
Councilman Sixth District?
Candace Hardy.
Councilman Seventh District?
Carl Durant.
Councilman District Eight?
Sky Sanchez.
Councilman At Large A?
Jamil Weddington.
Councilman At Large B?
Heaven Lisa.
Councilman At Large C?
Katana. Gatlin.
Councilman At Large D?
Ashaya Thomas.
City Clerk?
Leila Lopez.
City Solicitor?
Naleen Boggs.
Chief of Police?
Jeffrey Delgado.
Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office?
Logan Johns.
Commissioner of License and Inspections?
Hanaaz Mali.
City Auditor?
Eric Gunsmen Sanchez.
Director of Constituent Services?
Nyara Romeo.
Treasurer?
Nalen Noel.
Director of Parks and Recreation?
Israel Upss.
Commissioner of Public Works?
Noah Paul.
Chief of Fire?
Jack Gonzalez.
Deputy Director for Parks and Recreation?
Adul Coiles.
Director of Planning?
Isaac Leonard.
Director of Cultural Affairs?
They Len Remes.
Director of Human Services?
Ivan Branch.
Director of Cultural Affairs?
Dylan Romes.
Director of Finance?
Josiah Harmon.
Director of Integrator Technologies?
Peyton Stab.
Director of Economic Development?
Jared. Goteras Lopez.
Director of Risk Management, sorry.
Angela Mina.
Director of Real Estate and Housing?
Jada. Mount Gun, Montgomery.
Oh, now you want to read everything. Go ahead.
And the mayor is Basile McCoy.
And today, our young people work really hard on a piece of legislation, a resolution that they drafted, and I'm going to ask Mr. President to come over here and speak to it. If you would. Um, yes, you can step down. Who else is going to help read? There was a few that said they would read, help read what you guys came up with. Yes, come on. So, you can talk a little bit about what we did in the process this morning. Just read a section, just a little bit. So, today, we talked about school and it being Teacher Appreciation Week, and the scholars had wonderful ideals about how they could recognize teachers and why teachers deserve more recognition, and things that they could actually honor them. So, this was their piece of legislation, the resolution that they drafted up, and I'll let Mr. President read.
Whereas, May 8th, 2023, to May 12th, 2023, is Teacher Appreciation Week. During Teacher Appreciation Week, we thank teachers for the special job that they do, and whereas, do something good for our teachers and show them their worth. And whereas, teachers help us learn many things, but they don't feel appreciated every day. They put lessons together for students, even the ones who don't listen, and whereas, teachers have so much work to do, they have work, they work day and night and have limited free time. Teachers wake up early in the morning. They have to leave their own children and families to work long hours and sometimes spend more time with students than at their homes. Teachers may have their own problems at home, but they still come to school and treat their students well. And whereas, teachers don't get paid enough, but they still spend their money on their classes. Sometimes, students take their anger out on them, but they still do their jobs, no matter how they feel. Teaching is hard and schools are more dangerous, but our teachers haven't given up. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Youth and City Government Council of the City of Wilmington that the Youth Council encourages Department of Education, school boards, principals, and students to do something nice for teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week.
Bye, guys. Thank you and thank you for coming.
So, at this time, we're going to give our youth an opportunity to introduce themselves and read their profile, and also acknowledge any family or friends or anyone who is there to support them. We're going to start with our First District Councilperson.
Hi, my name's Ethan Clark. I go to Gateway Charter School. I'm in sixth grade. My favorite hobby is rock climbing and basketball. I will want to be a basketball player when I grow up. My aunt's name is Donna Black, and my uncle's name is Joe Lloyd.
Also, for family, for any supporters of the children, when they call your names or they acknowledge you, please, please stand. Thank you. We're going to go to our Second District Councilperson. Councilmember, if you can speak into the mic, please.
My name is Najee Williams. I'm in seventh grade and I go to Nativity Prep. My favorite subject and hobbies is I like math and I like football. One thing I would like to do in my career is I want to be an NFL player. I want to play football. And my parents' name is Najah Mercer, which is my mom, and Bilal Rahim, which is my dad.
Thank you. Our Third District Councilmember?
Hi, my name is Chase Robinson. I'm from Bancroft School. I'm in the fourth grade and I'm from City Council District Three. My favorite subjects are math and reading. What I would like to do when I grow up is become a soccer player. My parents' names are Courtney and Robbie.
Thank you. Our Fourth District Councilmember?
Hello, my name is Jaden Bethea and I go to the Bancroft School. I am in the fifth grade and the government office I am serving is City Council Four. My favorite subjects and hobbies are math and playing games. What would I like to do? I would like to be a basketball player. My mom's name is Ty Mara and my momma's name is Marie, and I have nothing else to say.
Our Fifth District Councilmember?
My name is Jeffrey Flores and I go to William C. Lewis Elementary. I'm a fifth grader. And I'm serving councilperson District Five. My favorite subjects and hobbies are math and science, and I like to play games and paint. Well, when I grew up, I would like to be, I would like to become a teacher. My parents' names are Marcelina and Anastasio, and I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Sine Darby, who has joined us virtually. This time, we'll go to our Sixth District Councilmember.
My name is Candace Hardy, and the school I go to is Byard, and I am in the third grade. The office I'm serving is District Six, and my favorite subject is math, and I like to draw. When I grow up, I would like to become a teacher, and my mom's name is Leona Hardy.
District Councilmember Seven?
Hi, my name is Carl Durant. I go to Lewis Elementary School. The title of government I'm serving is Councilperson District Seven. The title of government I'm serving is Councilperson District Seven. My favorite subjects are P and math. I would like to be a baseball player when I grow up. And my parents' names are Nora and Nate Durant.
Fifth and the fifth district.
District person Council Eighth.
My name is Sky Sanchez. I go to AI Dupont. I'm in sixth grade. I'm serving District Eight. My favorite subject is social studies and my hobby is cheerleading. I would like to be a veterinarian when I grow up and my mom's name is Irisa Sanchez.
Councilmember at large A.
Hello, my name is Jamil Weddington. I go to Byard. I'm in the sixth grade and I'm Councilperson A. My favorite subject and my hobbies is football and I like math and I want to create a computer. And my mom's name is Lakeisha Mitchell and my dad's name is Johnny Weddington.
Councilmember at large B.
Hi, my name is Heavenly Snell and I go to AI Dupont Middle School and I'm in sixth grade. I am also an honor student. Um, member, I'm in the member at large B. Uh, my favorite subject is math. I like to play football. And when I'm older, I want to be a hairdresser or a police officer. And my aunt's name is Sherri Patrick.
Councilmember at large C.
Hi, my name is Katana Gallin and I go to AI Dupont Middle School and I'm in sixth grade. The office that I'm serving is member at large C. My favorite subject and hobbies is, my favorite subject is family consumer science and my hobby is basketball. When I want to grow up, I want to be a nail technician and my mom is Janet Justice.
At this time, we'll have our City Council President.
Councilmember at large D.
Hi, my name is Asaya Thomas and I go to AI Moon School. My position is Member at Large D. My favorite subject is English. My favorite hobby is dancing. And when I could be older, I would like to become a cosmetologist. And my parents' names are Latice and Steve Sanders.
At this time, we'll have our City Council President.
My name is Jayden Davis. Uh, school I go to is Nativity Prep. I am in the seventh grade. Uh, my hobbies are soccer, track, and football, and I also like science. Uh, what I would like to do for a career is own a clothing business. My mom's name is Stephanie Green. My dad's name is Lamar Davis. And I thank my mom for taking care of me and making sure that I'm okay at all times.
City Clerk.
My name is Leila Lopez. I go to Bancroft, fifth grade. I am serving as City Clerk. My favorite subject is math. Um, I want to be a principal as my career. My parents' name is Jose and Alexandria, and I do not have any more comments.
Mayor.
My name is Basil McCoy. The school I go to is Nativity Prep. I'm in the sixth grade. The title government, what I'm serving for is mayor. My favorite subject is uh, is uh, history and my hobbies, I play football, basketball. Uh, it says, what do you like to do? And your career, uh, being in NFL, my mom's name, Mariah Stevens, and my dad, Basil McCoy.
I think I just want to make sure that we didn't miss anyone. At this time, I'm going to have closing remarks by Councilmember Mills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to again thank my colleague, my new colleagues. My future, you know, I look forward to it. And when I say you guys did an outstanding job today, your questions were on point. Behavior was excellent, showed a lot of respect. And just say thank you and stay, continue to reach for your goals and you guys can be anything you like to be. Those seats that you're sitting in now can truly be your seats one day. You just keep pressing on and believing your goals and to the teachers and to the families, keep up the great job. It's evident that you guys are putting in work and I just, we just want to say thank you on behalf of City Council. Thank you.
This is now, this now completes the portion of Youth and City Government. Thank you to all the students and teachers who participated this evening.
Good job today. Yes.
We're going to ask all Councilmembers to please return to your seats. All Councilmembers, please return to your seats.
See, they swinging now, right?
We're going to ask all Councilmembers to please return to your seats. Uh, Councilmember Oliver, do you have any recognitions this evening? You may come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like all of the individuals who are here from the Afro-American Sports Hall of Fame, could y'all please come up? Afro-American Hall of Fame, please come up. Inductees, inductees. Thank you, thank you, thank. We got the, Devon, I need you over here. We've got some more. Wow, this is beautiful. I'd like y'all to know, these are the, this is a group, just a few of Delaware's Afro-American Sports Hall of Famers. Let's give them a round of applause. Whereas, it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievements and are deserving of recognition and acknowledgements. Councilmember Xanthea Oliver would like to acknowledge and congratulate the 2023 inductees of Delaware Afro-American Sports Hall of Fame. Whereas Delaware Afro-American Sports Hall of Fame, Inc., DAASHOF, was founded in 1996 under the leadership of Howard Tolliver, Nathan Doc Hill, and the late Reverend Carol Rowley, Jr., and the late Henry Scott. And whereas, its inception, the following group's objective is to, has been to research and recognize outstanding Delaware high school, college professionals, athletes, regardless of their race, creed, or gender. The purpose of this award is to recognize noteworthy individuals and their contributions to the state of Delaware to ensure they will forever be remembered. And whereas, this year, inductees included Bishop Devon Parks, who played basketball, Bishop Darren Parks, who also played basketball, Tamara Stoner, Field and Track, Ronald Allen, basketball coach, Charles Hope, football, Dopless Ward, Derkey, football, Field and Track. And there were, these will mark, this will mark the first time in the history of Delaware Afro, Delaware Afro Sports Hall of Fame that two brothers are inducted and they are twins. And whereas, the members of this legendary group have gone on to be leaders in the public, private sector, they have made honorable contributions in their, in their support to the next generation of youth in Wilmington, Delaware and throughout the state. Now, they're be resolved by the Council and the City of Wilmington that this legislative body would like to recognize the accomplishments of Delaware Afro Sports Hall of Famers 2023 inductees. We celebrate the pride of their legends and they have brought, and what they have brought to the City of Wilmington and the state of Delaware. Congratulations to our inductees. Please stand up and give them a round of applause. And I think they have some family here. Could your family stand up? We have family here and friends. I can't hear them. Yes, give me one second. Um, um, because of time, we're only going to have one inductee because we do have some business to take care of tonight to come speak for everybody. Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, first I just want to say thank you to City Council for having us here. Um, what a great night with youth and government. I'm a retired principal teacher and also work with youth and government, my wife and I. So Wilmington gets a bad rap sometime, but we got some good stuff going on, so let's give it up. What I love about this group here, um, got the opportunity to get to know them a little better. Some I knew back when I was growing up, like Derkey Ward was always somebody I looked up to. But we had the opportunity to be on your TV show. And we're not just basketball players, football players. The people behind me are all people who give back to the city, to the state in one way or the other, whether it's mentoring, teaching, coaching. Um, and so I stand up today honored to be able to speak for these great people behind me to my left and my right, um, for all that they're doing and continue to do. And as I look at them young kids who just left here, we were those kids once. And we were in these same streets in the same state and we made it because people believed in us, not only the teachers, but even people like yourselves. So this day, we just want to say thank you for honoring us. You didn't have to do it, but you did it. And to come back home to the city of Wilmington where I love it is an even better honor. So once again, thank you, City Council. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver and everyone else who made this possible, President Mark Fields, our president. And um, once again, I know we're short on time and we have a dinner reservation as well, so thank you.
I'm going to ask y'all just to line up here so you can get a quick picture and let me give y'all.
Councilmember Spadola, do you have a recognition?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I forgot to say hi to Ms. Parks. She's a third district resident and she has always supported me before I was even on City Council. I love you, Ms. Parks. Thank you. Ms. Gloria, thank you so much. Third district.
Councilmember Spadola.
Good Mrs. Yuko Thomas and family, join me, please. Good evening, everybody. So I think those of us on council, we use these moments of recognition in a similar purpose to honor, recognize people that won an award, were inducted into a Hall of Fame, and also to recognize people that might not have won an award and do just as important work behind the scenes and without the recognition. Um, so tonight, I'm happy to bring some recognition to Ms. Yuko Thomas, who years ago added me into a Facebook group that she formed. Uh, I forget the name of it, something about Yuko Thomas, the trash picking up lady. And for years, she would post the pictures of the trash that she would pick up religiously about once a week. Uh, I'm talking major trash bags full. Uh, and it's, you know, it's inspiring to me to see someone to have that initiative, uh, to take it on her own, uh, to make the city a better place, to make her neighborhood a better place. Uh, and I hope that by recognizing her tonight, that if anybody's watching this, they too will take the initiative and, you know, pick up some trash just on their own corner. Uh, and I know there are a couple of people that pick up trash throughout the city, but I don't think anybody's documented it as well as she has in her Facebook group. And she has a great story too that I'll share. Um, at the age of 16, Yuko traveled alone from Mount Fuji, Japan to Australia to be an exchange student. When she was 18, she made the trip to the US to complete a second high school exchange program. Uh, she wanted to study English to become a flight attendant. Uh, after graduating high school, she continued her education. And when she flew back to Japan, she noticed that the pilot was a woman and she was impressed with that. Uh, and she became a pilot at being inspired by that female pilot. Uh, when she moved to 2010, she was not, she moved to Japan, she was not able to fly there, uh, but then moved back to the US and settled in Wilmington. Uh, and one day, when jogging in her neighborhood, uh, she noticed a lot of trash on her streets and she just started picking up the trash on her streets. And she continues to do that to this day. Uh, and she is now a co-pilot at a Newcastle County Airport. So I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Yuko Thomas for all she does.
I wasn't expecting this, but um, thank you to my husband organizing all this and thank you to Mr. Spadola and everybody here. And thank you to my friend and thank you to my Facebook friend. So uh, and thank God for everything. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Oliver, you have any comment?
Yes, I just want to say, um, I'm glad that Councilwoman Spadola has honored you. I remember years ago, you picking up trash because I used to laugh and say, who's that lady always picking up this trash? And wow, congratulations. I mean, she's been doing this for years. Kudos to you.
Councilmember McCoy.
I just wanted to say to Mr. and Mrs. Thomas, thank you so much for coming out. I actually had heard your story before and I'm always fascinated by it. I commend you on picking up the trash. Please help keep Wilmington clean. Thank you so much for what you're doing and hey, Dale.
And I believe that does conclude all of our presentations for this evening. As far as sympathy resolutions from all of council, sympathy resolutions for Maurice Pritchett and from Councilwoman Oliver, sympathy resolution for Tyera Weddington. At this time, I'm going to accept a motion to extend public comment past 7:30.
Second.
If we're probably moving second to extend public comment, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Council President.
Yes.
May I be excused?
Yes, you may. Thank you. At this time, we are going to move into public comment. And just as a reminder, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who has not already signed up for public comment. Your timeframe is three minutes. Please keep your comments pertaining to Wilmington City Council districts or City Council business. And please do not address any council members directly, but only address me as the president. First, we will begin with those who are in council chambers, starting with Deacon Earl Tate. Thank you, Mr. Tate, and please try to keep your comments within three minutes.
My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate and I would like to say I'm proud to see, proud to see that they are, that they are getting, that they are getting the streets, streets done here in town, but I would like to see them, see them get the streets done over, over my side of the town also because, because we need, we need, we need this whole city streets fixed up so that, so that the people that come here can, can drive down, can drive down the road nice and smooth, nice and smooth and easy with that, with that going over the bumpity bump, bump, bump. And, and, and like, and like, like that, that is one of the things that I would like to see. And, 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 and I will say this, the kids are our future and our future is now. So we got to learn how to care for our kids, right? And, and, and I like to finish it off by, by reading one of my poems titled Love. There's many, there's many kinds of love the world will ever know. For example, there are love of money, cars, boats, jewels, sex, planes, models, fashion, horse, horses, houses, men, women, animals, et cetera. I could go on for, for days naming the different type of love there are. But to me, there's only one real and true type of love. That is the kind of love that had that deep and warm feeling of want, need, protection, comfort, compassion, understanding and respect for each other. So the next time, next time, when, when you want to ask that big question, take, take time and think and make sure the words come from your heart and not just from your mouth because someone's feelings may be hurt. And I like to say Happy Mother's Day to all mothers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dwight Davis.
Mr. President, members of Wilmington City Council, my name is Brother Dwight L. Davis and I am extremely honored to have sat through this Youth Day in government. When you add a L, a L to governmental and you put a hyphen between the govern and the mental, you understand what government is supposed to represent. Law, order and governmental principles. Today, I was very proud to be at my place over at the Muslim Center of Wilmington and I met a young man who traveled down from Philadelphia and he came down to Coombia Academy to teach the band. And it was quite interesting. I said, well, who are you teaching the band to? He said seventh and eighth graders. So I'm, I'm, I'm real pleased to mention Coombia Academy. Furthermore, with President Biden designating Wilmington, the city of Wilmington government, Wilmington logistically as being his campaign headquarters brings great opportunity for us here in this city. We have now become an international city. So I'm real thankful to President Congo and the members of council for establishing the Wilmington City Council Reparations Task Force. And this task force is, is designed to address the issues of, of our forbearance here in this, in this particular country. Delaware is the first. It's the first to send representatives to sign the Declaration of Independence. It's the first to send representatives to sign the Constitution and it is the first to give the Peter, Bishop Peter Spencer and his community a charter. After being enslaved in Maryland and reborn in the city of Wilmington, they received the first independent charter that established the African Union Church. And in August coming up will be over 200 years of August Quarterly. So it is very interesting and beneficial for all those that voted to establish this reparations task force to look into the Google group and see some of the work that is being done on your behalf and on the behalf of those who are ex-slaves here in the city of Wilmington specifically. This is a reparations task force, not for Newcastle County, not for the state of Delaware, not for the nation, but it is for the city of Wilmington. So let's keep that in mind as we move towards August Quarterly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brother Bay, did you have any comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Evening, family, President Trippier and councilmen. I'm on the same subject, drug, alcohol and mental treatment and counseling, you know. That's something that's dear to me. I'm working at the Howard Young and Kent County probation and my main concern is prevention, you know, preventing those well-being from using drugs and alcohol. But right now here in Delaware, most of the treatment is coming from out of prisons and one shouldn't have to go to prison and get treatment. You know, we had connections and they no longer around at the community base before connections, there was organization called Black Men's Development Center, which I'm a proud graduate of that program. People like myself and the other young ones was released to Black Men's from Fair School for Boys, third party custody. And they taught us about manhood training, you know, saying some of these individuals, juveniles didn't have no father at home, you know. So now we dealing with a different generation. Drugs and alcohol to them is a solution to the problem, but that's not the solution. That is the problem. So I'm just hoping I got a nonprofit tech exempt organization called the Holloway House, which is now registered in Delaware, same stuff I was doing in Houston and Dallas, which is a bigger state. So I'm hoping I can get the support from the city or from the county here and Delaware and individuals who are doing the same work. So we need more drug and alcohol treatment and housing for those being released from prison or in the community, you know. So that compounds the problem. So we need to address these issues because they're not going away, you know. So I'm here to implore you to maybe we can all get together and do something, you know. And it's all about finance. It's all about money, you know, and we know that. So again, I'm a taxpayer, you know, I'm willing to put my tax dollars involved in drug and alcohol treatment counseling, you know, and working with the police department. That's what we did back with Black Men Development Center. A lot of people have a problem with that, but I don't have a problem, you know. So somebody breaking your house will kill you, who are you going to call, you know? So again, I'm looking to be a partnership with those who are interested in what I'm doing and it's a big need and we need to have those people, Ben and Carson, ready to come back as volunteers, as mentors, you know, they got the experience. Right now, I'm working with a lot of people who got degrees, but got no experience, you know. So again, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. At this time, we will move to those who have signed up virtually. Going to start with Devon Marquejo, representing the third district.
Good evening. This is Devon Marquejo, D. Marquejo, third district Wilmington, Delaware. I am grateful to be here. I'm grateful to the city for allowing me to speak. I spoke a couple of weeks back about the situation that happened with the man who was in need of help, man that was in crisis, 35 years old. He called about, well, he didn't call, the police were called to help him because he, he was trying to kill himself. This is Mental Health Awareness Month and, you know, the police came and apparently he didn't stop stabbing himself. And apparently he was killed. He was shot or, we don't have any, we don't have any new news about this. We don't know if the police had the body cameras on. I don't know anything about what happened except what was reported from the police. So when I talked about the real-time crime unit and transparency and accountability, that's real. That's needed. That is needed for the public to feel safe, for us to know that we can trust, for us to know that we do have a, a police force and a city government that cares enough about our public to make sure that we have the best folks coming to do the job to ensure peace. And with these cameras that we fought to get on to these, these people that are trusted and trained and supposedly effective in the right way, we, we need for there to be enforcement on your end as council to make sure that, that awareness is there and that communication is there and that we actually have the safety that we seek. And with that, I'll just say God bless you all, council president, council. Have a good night and do what's right.
Thank you very much. And just for the sake of clarity, I'm going to allow Councilmember McCoy just to have a few remarks.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm very glad to be able to have a public comment and for people to make certain that we are aware of what they are, I guess what's on their mind. But to clarify, the gentleman did not, he is not deceased. So I just want to make certain that people are aware, the person that Mr. Hall spoke of is not deceased.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Christina Kelly from the second district.
Good evening and thank you for an opportunity to address the council tonight. I, A, actually wanted to thank council members for some of the resolutions that are up tonight. I am very appreciative of you all taking steps to actually help Wilmingtonans. So seeing reduced civil penalties and, you know, funds being set up to help renters in the city, et cetera, is, is a wonderfully positive thing and I am beyond ecstatic to see these things finally coming from council. My second comment actually feeds a little bit off of D. Mark's comments there in that while, no, the gentleman is not deceased, I, I don't think that that takes away from the critical nature of this incident in that a mentally ill individual who was suicidal, you know, honestly, suicide by cop should not be a thing and it can only be a thing when we have police officers who are honestly out of control and the first thought is to reach for the gun on our hips. So I would like to see either a resolution come out of council that we no longer provide any additional funding for training or purchase of tasers until our officers start going to non-lethal options first. Or, and/or I should say, a resolution from city council urging WPD to release the body camera footage that shows that this man was posing an active risk to the life of the officer who posed an active risk to his life. And I thank you for an opportunity to speak tonight. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have Keon Jordan McDole, representing the first district. Next, we're going to go back to someone who is in council chambers, Ms. Yvonne Brown for public comment. You may come forward, please, if you'd like to give public comment.
Straight here.
Yes, ma'am. Once you get to the microphone, please introduce yourself right over to the left and please be careful when you step up. Thank you.
My name is Yvonne Brown and I live in the 1400 block of West Second Street and I just wanted to come up here and express my concern about the incident that I had with the Wilmington Police. They ran a stop sign and ran into my, I hit him, but he ran a stop sign and the officer was really nasty to me. And he gave me a ticket without disputing. And I'm very angry about what transpired because I was at the stop sign and the officer that I hit, I was at the stop sign and I stayed there for a long time and I got a ticket for failure to remain stopped. It was a bright day, no overcast or anything and I hit him and he didn't have his lights on and no siren. And he asked me, was okay, did I need an ambulance? And I said, no, I'm really shook up, but I gotta use the bathroom. And he asked me where did I live and I told him at 1408 West Second Street. And he asked me that I want him to follow me to my house so I could use the restroom. And I told him, no, you know, I just, well, when the rest of the cops came, it was like seven SUVs there in less than two minutes and he gave me a ticket and he was very nasty to me. And I said, what are you giving me a ticket for? He told me failure to remain stopped. Well, how long I gotta stay stopped at a stop sign? It's a three-way stopped. And I'm disputing it and I have a court date, but I'm, I'm very angry because that, you know, they was wrong. So I'm just saying, you know, that you want to be civil and cooperative when you have contact with the police, but I'm saying when they carry you on like that, I'm saying, you know, what's the point? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing. Please be careful when you step down. Councilmember White is going to help you.
And I came up here Tuesday because I was under the impression at city council meetings or the first and third Tuesday of every month. And I came up here on Tuesday and I was informed that it was Thursday. So I'm a little late, but I just here to come up here and express my.
Okay, we appreciate you. Yes, it's the first and third Thursdays and we're going to get your contact information before you leave, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, young man.
Say that loud.
Thank you, young man.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And that does conclude our public comment. At this time, we're going to move to legislative business. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 23018, agenda 0296, an ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the city code to allow residential tenants and city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the city code to allow residential tenants and city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
I'll move second.
It's a probably moving second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 23019, agenda 0297, an ordinance to amend chapter
An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to establish a permanent water utilities assistance program.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to establish a permanent water utilities assistance program.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading. The ordinance refers to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Councilmember Johnson, uh, for your next ordinance, please, speaking to your mic. Thank you. It's been properly moved, the second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have another ordinance and, uh, to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty, agenda zero-two-nine-eight. An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to require the establishment of water, sewer, and stormwater rates and charges for consecutive three years, period.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to require establishment of water, sewer, and stormwater rates and charges for consecutive three-year periods.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading. An ordinance refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
So move second.
It's been properly moved, the second, that be, that, that resolution be received, recorded, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero twenty, agenda zero-two-nine-nine. Whereas Senate Bill Number Two, an Act to amend Title eleven, Title twenty-four, and Title twenty-nine of the Delaware Code relating to deadly weapons, would amend Titles eleven, twenty-four, and twenty-nine of the Delaware Code to establish an application process that will require handgun purchasers, purchasers to obtain a qualified purchase of permit and to present proof.
Mr. President, I move that, that the resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a yea-nay vote.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Uh, Mr., Mr. President, I, uh, move this resolution, um, it, it is time-sensitive as the, um, General Assembly is currently wei- weighing this bill right now. Um, the prime sponsor is, uh, on the Senate side is, um, Senator Tizzie Lockman, um, as well as the rest of the city, uh, uh, state, uh, raps. In terms of, um, this is, uh, this measure, um, will continue to give us a tool to combat, uh, the violent crime, or the violent gun crimes specifically in Wilmington, as requiring, um, all owners of guns, uh, or, or purchasers of guns to have a permit. Um, surprisingly, Delaware has never required this, um, but the studies show, um, and the data shows actually that it states to have the more comprehensive gun tracking and gun, um, permitting process have lower rates of violence, such as New Jersey, uh, for example, has some of the strongest, uh, laws, and, um, they also have some of the least viol- less, le- lowest violent, uh, gun violence in, in the nation. Uh, so this is something that I think is just common sense, should've happened a long time ago, frankly, um, you need a license to drive a car, um, but you don't need one to buy a gun. So, uh, just, it's, it's mind-boggling, but, but here we are. So, this is long overdue, um, it's supported by, uh, not only our, our city, uh, raps, but also, um, you know, Moms Demand Action, as well as the Delaware Coalition to, um, combat gun violence as well, they're strong supporters of this bill. Um, so we need to make our voices heard so that we can continue to pass gun safety laws in, in, in Dover. This is one that, this is a step in the right direction. We have still many more bills that we need to get passed down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no hands raised, Councilmember Bracy.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Oliver.
Um, I already, um, yeah, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, talk to Chris.
Councilmember White.
Councilmember White likes to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Just put us all on there.
Councilmember Fields.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Johnson, do you have any final comments?
Uh, in the final comments, I appreciate everyone's support, and let's, uh, it did pass out of Senate Committee, uh, so, you know, it still needs to go to House side, uh, so, you know, we gotta keep the, uh, pedal, uh, mashed, and, and let's get these gun bills across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yay.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola. Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven pres-, uh, excuse me, eleven yays and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Mr. President, lastly, I have an ordinance to present for Councilmember Cabrera. I believe she's, uh, online, but, um, I will be presenting this for her. Uh, I have an, uh, I'll be calling for a first and second reading.
Are we doing it in order of the agenda?
It was a last-second switch.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Okay.
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 Councilmember Oliver.
Well, I am done for now.
Okay, thank you.
I just didn't hear what he said, it sounded like, I mean, his mumbling, I didn't hear what he...
Oh, no, we're, we're fine, we're going to the next, uh, item.
Okay, I just couldn't hear what he said.
Councilmember Field.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-one, agenda zero-three-hundred. An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to extend Sunday hours of operation for non-conforming liquor stores.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to extend Sunday hours of operation for non-conforming liquor stores.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Um, Mr. President, I move that, that it, this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
So move second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Councilmember Johnson, on behalf of Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I'm back again. Uh, I have an ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-two, agenda zero-three-zero-one. An ordinance to amend chapter thirty-seven of the city code to reduce civil penalties for certain parking violations and to eliminate the discount for early payment of certain penalties.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter thirty-seven of the city code to reduce civil penalties for certain parking violations and to eliminate dis- discount for early payment of certain penalties.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading. An ordinance refer to Finance and Economic Development Committee.
So move second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
And that completes my business for the evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to accept a motion. This time, I'm going to accept a motion for council to dissolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purpose for the purpose of addressing the matter pertaining to the prior vacancy for the at-large seat vacated by the late Councilmember Loretta Walsh from the November twenty-eighth, twenty-two thousand twenty-two meeting, and then the First District seat vacated by the late Councilmember Linda M. Gray from the February first, two thousand twenty-three meeting, as recommended by the Attorney General's Office pursuant to the opinion dated March twenty-second of this year.
So move.
So move. I second.
It's been properly moved, and second, for council to dissolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of addressing the matter pertaining to the prior vacancy for the at-large seat vacated by the late Councilmember Loretta Walsh from the November twenty-eighth, twenty-two meeting, and the First District seat vacated by the late Councilmember Linda M. Gray from the February first, two thousand twenty-three meeting, as recommended by the Attorney General's Office pursuant to the opinion dated March twenty-second, twenty-two-three. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Spadola. For the first order of business, I will announce the members that were present during the executive session of the Committee of the Whole that occurred on Monday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at five forty-eight P.M. Councilmembers, Councilmember Sinead Darby, Councilmember Xanthia Oliver, Councilmember Michelle Harley, Councilmember Yolanda McCoy, Councilmember Al Mills, Councilmember Brigida Fields, Councilmember Nathan Field, Councilmember Maria Cabrera, Councilmember Chris Johnson, Councilmember James Spadola, and I, President Congo, was present and presided over that meeting pursuant to the Attorney General's recommendation dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three regarding council's foyer violation pertaining to the November twenty-eighth, twenty-two regarding Committee of the Whole meeting to fill the, the council seat vacated by the late Councilwoman Loretta Walsh. It's recommended that the council, that the committee's voting on the candidates be repeated in a future meeting in an open session. Therefore, no debate is required on the floor today. We are here this evening solely to announce the voting publicly. The following fifteen qualified candidates were interviewed Nancy Lopez, Justin Wright, William Wilmore, Wayna Dobson, Andre Harris, Latisha Bracy, John Johnson, Kathleen Patterson, Charles Vincent, Devon Hall, Deborah Craig, Gary Leonarducci, Donald Farrell, James Taylor, and Jeffrey Santoro. Per city code, each member of the Committee of the Whole shall identify up to three candidates to fill the vacancy. As I call your name, please state who you voted for. Councilmember Darby.
Who we on? I'm sorry, I just walked in.
Oh, I see. So right now, we are...
Which one? The at-large?
Yes.
Or the First District?
At lo- at large.
All right, so for at-large, um, we're saying the name of the candidate?
Yes, that we, that you voted for.
All right, so I had two votes. So my first candidate was, um, Dobson, Wayna Dobson, and then my second choice was Latisha Bracy.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Uh, for at-large, uh, I voted for, um, Justin Wright.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
Uh, Justin Wright.
Councilmember Fields.
Yes, I voted for Justin Wright.
Councilmember McCoy.
Justin Wright.
Councilmember Johnson.
Bracy.
Councilmember Field.
Bracy and Santoro.
Councilmember Cabrera, isn't it? Councilmember Cabrera.
I voted for Bracy, Santoro, and Patterson.
Councilmember Mills.
Bracy and Patterson.
Councilmember Spadola.
Latisha Bracy.
And I voted for Wayna Dobson. Latisha Bracy received the majority of the votes with six, followed by Wright with four, and Dobson, Patterson, and Santoro with two each. The second order of business, I will announce, for the second order of business, I will announce the members of the committee that were present during the executive session of the Committee of the Whole that occurred on Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three, at six forty-eight P.M. Those councilmembers present were Councilmember Sinead Darby, Councilmember Xanthia Oliver, Councilmember Michelle Harley, Councilmember Yolanda McCoy, Councilmember Al Mills, Councilmember Brigida Fields, Councilmember Nathan Field, Councilmember Ma- Maria Cabrera, Councilmember Chris Johnson, Councilmember James Spadola, and Councilmember Latisha, Latisha Bracy. I, President Congo, was present and presided over the meeting. Again, pursuant to the Attorney General's recommendation dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three regarding council's foyer violation pertaining to the February first, two thousand twenty-three Committee of the Whole meeting to fill the council seat vacated by the late Councilwoman Linda Gray, it's recommended that council, that the committee's voting on the candidates be repeated in a future meeting in open session. Therefore, no debate is required. We are solely here to announce the voting publicly. The following three candidates were interviewed, Kobe Owens, Vincent White, and Harold Gray. Per city code, each member of the Committee of the Whole shall identify up to three candidates to fill the vacancy. As I call your name, please state who you voted for. Councilmember Darby.
Um, Kobe Owens.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Vincent White.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Vincent White.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields.
Vincent White.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Kobe Owens.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Gray.
Thank you, Councilmember Field.
Gray.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera.
Vincent White.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills.
Owens.
Thank you, Councilmember Spadola.
Vincent White.
Thank you, Councilmember Bracy.
Owens.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I voted for Gray. White received the most votes with five, followed by Owens with four, and Gray with three. It was shared by the parliamentarian that seven votes are required. As I call your name, please state who you voted for. Councilmember Darby.
Who I voted for, Kobe Owens.
Councilmember Oliver.
Vincent White.
Councilmember Harley.
Vincent White.
Councilmember Fields.
Vincent White.
Councilmember McCoy.
Owens.
Councilmember Johnson.
Owens.
Councilmember Field.
White.
Councilmember Cabrera.
White.
Councilmember Mills.
White.
Councilmembers Spadola.
White.
Councilmember Bracy.
White.
And I voted for Owens. White received the majority votes with eight votes, Owens received four votes. For full transparency and, and as recommended by the Attorney General's office pertaining to the council foyer violation, council has publicly announced the vote, the vote counts that were previously done in executive session pertaining to filling the last two council vacancies vacated by the late Councilwoman Walsh and Councilwoman Gray. This time, I'll accept the motion to return to regular business.
So move.
So move.
It's been properly moved, and second, that council return to the order of regular business. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will move to petitions and communication. Councilmember White.
None at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Darby.
Um, none at the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Uh, yes, I do, um, I would like to, um, make an announcement. This upcoming Wednesday, um, some council members will be over to, um, Hair Manor, um, giving out some trinkets to Hair Manor and, um, um, Kings Plaza. So that be this Wednesday, we'll be stopping through there. Um, I'd like to thank, um, Catholic Charities again, Edie Pritchett and her group for coming out, uh, assisting individuals with their lecture bill. Um, and I'd like to, um, what is something else I have, but I don't have my notes in front of me, I just can't think right now. Um, and I'd like to, um, thank, um, Councilman Mills for the youth in government and participating in that process today, and we really enjoyed ourselves, and, um, he really stepped up his game. So, thanks for everybody who participated today.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Um, nothing tonight, Mr. President, may I be excused?
Not, not just yet. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, I do. Um, I just want to state that on May thirteenth, on Saturday, May thirteenth, from ten A.M. to three P.M., Christiana Care Telehealth bus will be at William Hicks Anderson Community Center, um, which is at five oh one North Madison Street. So I'm asking all of my colleagues just to come out and, um, just come visit the bus. We are definitely gonna be focusing on, um, stroke prevention, um, I'm, we're dedicating it to my mother who passed away from a stroke, and, um, we're working on that, um, due to mental health, stress, and mental wear, um, and just health wellness. And that's gonna be on, um, Saturday, May thirteenth. And you know I have a quote. Can I say my quote?
Yes.
"You've got to get up every morning with determination if you're going to go to bed with satisfaction," George Launier. George Launier.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley, thank you for your patience. You may be excused. Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you. Um, I actually have two announcements. Uh, one is for our youth that are having a drum john. It is a free interactive drumming event. It's going to be for all ages, experi- and experience levels. It is on Saturday, May twentieth at, from ten A. M. to one P. M. So if you have a drum, you can still, uh, please come out. Even if you don't have a drum, they may still have some for you to participate. There is, um, a, you have to register. That information is on my council, uh, Facebook page, which is Councilwoman Yolanda McCoy. The, uh, let me see. The programs that are involved is Imperial Dynasty, J. K. Percussion and Arts, uh, Mobile Music Labs, and this came from the Jersey Surf World Club. World-class drum corps. So that, so anyone who's into percussions, please attend. Uh, the other thing is I wanted to make certain you probably have seen this, hopefully. Uh, Safe Surrender is coming on May twelfth. So the Safe Surrender program, this is the first time it's actually happened since two thousand nine. I got a chance to meet, uh, Judge Davis, and also, um, Senator Brown is the one who brought this to my attention. He wanted to make certain that it, uh, it received a lot of promotion throughout the state, but of course, definitely Wilmington. So Safe Surrender program is basically all those who have K. P. S.'s or warrants basically to smaller, um, uh, issues. It says you forgot to pay your traffic fine, or your child support, or missed a court date. Come clear your record at Safe Surrender. That's going to be February, May twelfth, from nine A. M. to seven P. M. Please understand, this is not an amnesty program. This is basically for those who have, uh, those types of issues, or you just want to make sure you get this K. P. S. cleared up. You're going to go turn yourself in, and mo- more than likely, you'll just be, um, getting a, uh, uh, must that rescheduling your court date. So, again, that's Friday from May twelfth, from nine A. M. to seven P. M., and it's going to be at the Leonard L. Williams Justice Center, right at the courthouse down the street. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, just an announcement regarding, um, where we are with the budget process. As you all who have watched the budget hearings, uh, as, as you know, they are concluded. Uh, we do have a budget, um, a finance committee meeting, uh, where, um, certain, um, pieces, uh, of, of new items are going to be discussed. Um, and that will be Monday, uh, evening at five P. M. Um, so please come out if, if you, uh, want to talk about the city budget. Um, as you know, there's a lot of legislation, um, that's happening right now, where, um, will be impacting our homes for the better, uh, increasing, um, you know, um, community investment. So please just come out if you have any interest in it, and then, uh, we will be having, of course, our, um, another committee hearing on, um, May fifteenth, the following Monday at five P. M., and then we will have, uh, the final budget presented on May eighteenth. So we hope to have everyone engaged, and, um, please give us your feedback as we have listened to the committee throughout this process. Um, so some of the stuff you saw probably in the beginning has drastically changed. So, um, you know, please stay tuned for the new updated pieces and items that we have. We'll be releasing the website soon, and then please give us your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Field.
Yes, I want to highlight four events that are taking place in and around the eighth district in the next two weeks. This Friday night, there are not one, but two art receptions as part of the Art Loop. The first is at the Howard Pyle Studio at thirteen oh five North Franklin Street from five o'clock to seven thirty. A lot of new art from their members. And the second is at Blue Street Gallery at fourteen twelve North Dupont Street, and that's a show by Catherine Basque. This Saturday, there is a, Friends of Wilmington Parks is hosting a pickleball tournament in Lovering Ave-, on the Lovering Avenue Pickleball Courts. This is the fastest-growing sport in the country, and there's a lot of interest in this sport. And so if you want to learn how to play, to play in a tournament, come out this Saturday. Third, the, the Delaware Art Museum is re- resuming their Summer Happy Hour series. That's every Thursday night from five o'clock to seven thirty from May twenty-fifth through September. And finally, a really fun event that will take place in Brandywine Park and also other parts of the city is the Wilmington Grand Prix on May twentieth, an extremely fun event that is here in our city, a national event. It's, it's really exciting and interesting to watch, and you, you, you can't miss out. It's, it's really good. That's all I got.
Thank you. Going to return back to Councilmember White for a few additional comments.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
I'm here, Mr. President.
Yes, I'll be right with you. Councilmember Cabrera.
My apologies, Mr. President. I neglected to mention that I'll be having a first district town hall meeting May tenth at the Cornerstone Fellowship Baptist Church, twenty Lee Boulevard. The meeting will start at six o'clock. Um, our new chief, uh, of police will be there as long, as well as some additional members of his staff. Also, Mr. President, councilmembers, on May sixteenth, uh, I will be walking from Wilmington, Delaware to Dover in support of more, of the creation of more affordable and stable housing. I will be sleeping somewhere between Odessa and Townsend. It is my goal to raise awareness to the need that this state, this city, this county needs to produce more decent, safe, and affordable housing. And all my colleagues will get a notice of that probably in about two hours. So thank you, Mr. President. Apologize for my oversight.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I would like to mention that the Saturday at ten A. M. is the opening day for the Roberto Clemente League, and that will take place, um, at Woodlawn Park on Fourth Street. Uh, also want to wish everybody a happy Cinco de Mayo tomorrow, for those who want to celebrate. Remember that this was the battle, uh, that they won in, um, in Mexico. It is not Independence Day. That is celebrated September fifteenth along with other countries. So it is just the battle that was won, and it's mostly an American holiday. Um, also wanted to wish all the mothers a very happy Mother's Day as mothers keep, um, things moving. Uh, we are the backbone of the family in many cases, sometimes the only ones in the family. Uh, since we will not, uh, have another meeting, uh, before Mother's Day, just wanted to wish everyone, uh, having Mother's Day. Um, so sorry I could not be there today, but, um, at a service of my mother's best friend, um, all the way in Foreyville, very far away, but I'm glad that the signal worked and I was able to join you for the meeting. And may I be excused, Mr. President, so I can get back to the service?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, I mean, recognize that it's Mental Health Awareness Month and encourage anybody in the community who's, who's having some issues to please reach out to one of the many qualified providers that we have in and around the city of Wilmington. And then a special thank you to our city council staff for their assistance today, especially Dr. Kendra Maribel and Akira, who, who were very hands-on with me today and helped me with the youth, and just say thank you for a job well done, and I'll yield the rest of my time to Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you. Um, um, I didn't have my notes for me, but I'm not going to reiterate what Councilwoman McCoy said, but, um, I do, uh, to encourage everyone to come out, um, on Friday for the Safe Surrender. And I too do, um, um, work with a lot of the reentry guys. So I really appreciate what Senator Brown has done, and they haven't had it in fifteen years. And, um, I think it, it warrants it. Um, I talked to a lot of people in Public Works that said they'd be over there. And just, um, people in general around the city of Wilmington. So I just appreciate the outstanding job he's doing in Dover. Um, I'd like to thank, um, everyone for participating in the budget, and, um, I think we did a good job this year, and that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadola. And Councilwoman Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, May ninth is school board elections. Um, polls will be open from seven A. M. to eight P. M. Um, school board is extremely important, whether you have children or not. So please, um, visit votedellaware.org to find your polling location and get out and vote. Um, also, there's going to be a new program starting in West Center City, um, starting on May thirteenth, Yoga for All with Amina Naru of Posh Yoga at the new Artemat Community Space on Seventh and Washington, uh, right in the heart of West Center City. And that's going to be happening every Saturday from ten to eleven thirty A. M. Um, and then there's an expungement fair on the twentieth of May at Kingswood Community Center. Um, and so that's going to be an expungent fair for adults and juveniles. So that'll be a good opportunity, um, to come out and get some, um, information, some resources, and connect with those that may be able to provide help. Um, two more. Um, congratulations to the Delaware chapter of the Lynx. This weekend, they will celebrate their seventy-fifth anniversary. Um, and I also wanted to send this, a special shout-out to all of the women, um, in our community who are not mothers by choice or by chance. Uh, Mother's Day can be difficult for some, especially, uh, those that are, uh, that have wanted to have children but couldn't or have lost their parents. Uh, so I just wanted to, uh, send some warm hugs and love your way, um, as we approach Mother's Day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just going to return back to Councilmember Fields.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I like, I did like the quote that I said, but I do want to, you know, I like, usually have like two. So my quote is, "Mental health is not a destination, but a process. It's about how you drive, not where you're going." No more fancy, M. H. Ph. D. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy. Part two.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Um, I forgot to congratulate, um, Mr. Donald Thompson, uh, and also Portia Green for their fabulous job for the groundbreaking event that happened yesterday. Uh, to congratulate this, uh, I say young man because he's younger than me, with, uh, his first development project with the six-pack and all of the, I think all of their homes are, um, are purchased. So, uh, it was a great, great event, and Portia Green did a great job with organizing everything. Um, also, she was just nominated or highlighted for the month of May through D. E. B., D. E. B. C. C., the Delaware Black Chamber of Commerce, as the member of the month. So give it up to Portia Green, one of our better or more, and more known P. R. people, because that's where I knew what P. R. was till I met her.
All right, thank you. Want to, uh, give a shout-out and recognize our former Chief of Staff, Daniel Walker, who's with us this evening. Good to see you, old friend. Uh, just want to congratulate all of the graduates from, uh, Delaware State University who are going to graduate next, uh, next Friday on the twelfth, and my son being one of them. Really excited about that.
All right.
Um, thank you. Also want to thank everyone who joined us this evening, virtually in the council chambers. Uh, really makes a difference when you are here with us. We really appreciate your presence and you just sharing your concerns with us. Uh, again, our meetings are every first and third, Thursday, right here on Eighth and French Streets. You can always, uh, give us a call if you have any questions or concerns at three zero two five seven six twenty-one forty. Again, our number is three oh two five seven six twenty-one forty. Please call us if you have any scholarship needs, and we will definitely be able to help you as well. And with that, I will take, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second. So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.